Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 5th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. I will note at the beginning that this meeting is conducted as authorized by Governor Andrew Cuomo of the State of New York under Executive Order 202.4A, which permits public meetings such as this one to be conducted remotely. I'll also note that this executive order expires tonight, so we'll hope it will be extended. May I first confirm with each member that you are alone and not with anyone who would be causing you to vote a certain way? Ms. Weiser? Let me unmute all of you.
Hi.
Ms. Wasser?
I am alone.
Mr. Pickett?
I am alone.
Mr. Oliver?
I am alone.
Is it Napoli?
You need to unmute?
Lower left corner, Diane?
I am alone.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Dexter?
I'm alone.
Let me start with my pledging allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for what is currently called Carriage Trails. This is an old, old application. I actually had a chance because the current applicants or current owners sent us a copy, a link to the supplemental environmental impact statement. I was able to ascertain that this project was actually first approved in 1990. Uh huh. Back then it had 470 dwelling units. It was over the years, rather than just being extended over and over again by 2000, the then Planning Board asked for updates for secret purposes because the original traffic studies, et cetera, are all that old. There was then a supplemental environmental impact state, statement prepared, issued, and adopted. In it, they reduced, so they could reduce impacts overall, they lowered it to, I believe, 330 units were approved. As we know, over the years since, it's been revised again. I believe now we have about 280-something units approved. The applicants are seeking to have an extension of the time in which to complete substantial construction because it was already started and make it a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved, Stephanie Wasser.
Second?
Chris, Oliver?
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Days or abstentions? The motion carries. Councilman Krupnick, are the applicant representatives here yet?
As far as I know, they are not. There is someone named Estimating in the waiting room, and I have no idea who that might be.
Pete, the last name?
It just says Estimating. E-S-T-I-M-A-T-I-N-G.
That might be Mr. Brandt, George Brandt, who works for the company?
Let's let him in and see what happens.
There's Lou.
There's both of them. Lou, George, good to see you. You're, you need to unmute? You're unmuted, but we still can't hear you. It may be that your mic is turned off. We didn't hear you even standing up. All I could do is see your lips moving literally, if you can hear us.
Can you keep your video on and then call in?
So while we wait, since they can hear us, rather than simply do another extension, Tad and the rest of our consultants looked into this and noted that the DEC Speedy, which is the Stormwater Pollution Elimination System Permit for Switching Plant, expired and was revoked on July 5th, 2018. The DEC has also indicated that they need new flow confirmation letters, an engineering report, and plans. The freshwater wetlands 401 permit that's required expired December 11th, 2015. A DEC in a letter from around January 2020 asked for a new application with plans. They also requested that the wetland boundary be recertified. I had told Tad that I thought that we just had that done, but we actually had that done. It's been over five years, and as we know, the DEC requires that every five years. That's how old this project is. So in a discussion with Mr. Kaufman and Mr. Brandt, what we decided to do was, rather than do an automatic extension, to hold the public hearing open. That way, they're in the process and the approval doesn't expire, that they can get us the new information that's required because they have been meeting with DEC, but since we're lead agency, we need to be on top of what the DEC is agreeing with and contacting. So as soon as we can get them, we can hear them. Are Lou and George in yet? Nope. I see Lou shaking his head. So that's sort of just a background element there. Does anybody have any questions for me? Stephanie and Ann, I will add, or no, not Stephanie, Diane and Ann were in the meeting at the time. At any rate, there's also, other issues have arisen as well. DEC seems to be requesting an updated Threat Endangered Rare Species Study to be submitted. I believe the applicants are talking to Mr. Noakey about that as well. And the original turtle protection for the Blandings turtles that were known to be near the site, the protection measures have changed. They've actually been tightened up by the DEC. So it seems as though we'd need to make some changes before we just extend this anyway, which is why it was me who actually suggested just keeping it open and adjourned this for six months to give them time to get the plant, new plans, new studies, et cetera. Mr. Kaufman and Mr. Brandt, I can still see you, but I can't hear you yet. One minute? Is that what that means? Okay.
Michael?
Yes?
Thank you for that explanation. I was wondering, when I saw the adjournment for six months, or actually not quite six months, but that makes a lot of sense. And it means that, you know, as things do evolve, they will have everything up to date and approved. And I think that's a good idea to make sure that everything stays current as they move forward.
The alternate possibility that we had discussed with Mr. Sotero, our engineering consultant, was to just do an extension for six months. But then they had to come back and reapply and have the information there. So since they're in process, as long as we don't close the public hearing without taking action, then their, the approval doesn't expire.
Right. I was gonna say, we generally don't like to approve projects where they have permits that have been expired for two years.
Also, I didn't mention it, but the SWIP, when you have a shutdown, like this project has been done, there's still normally supposed to be monthly SWIP reports. They're just more limited in fashion. Tad can discuss this more. And the bank was actually submitting the monthly SWIPs, but there's been two years of that activity, and the permit has expired because the last report was March 6th, 2018. So there's a lot of things that need to get moving on again, and it didn't really make sense to extend something where there is no permit, so they, because they couldn't actually do anything without the permits as it is. As I said, being lead agency, we need to stay apprised of what DEC, what information is going back and forth between them. And it looks as though Mr. Kaufman and Mr. Brandt still can't phone in for some reason. Lou and George, if you'd like, you could use the chat function to communicate with us about something. It's at the bottom, it's in the bottom icons on the bottom of your screen. It'll say chat, and allows you to chat to everyone, and we can all read it, if you'd Well, this is gonna be a fun meeting for people at home to watch. Long moments of awkward silence.
Maybe if he agrees with everything, just give a thumbs up.
Okay. Councilman Krupnick, were there any members of the public who signed in and are in the waiting room, waiting to speak about this application?
There are none.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear?
No, there was nobody waiting in the waiting room.
Thank you.
And Lou did type something.
I just sent Lou the phone number to call in.
Any comments from the consultants, Ms. Axelson or Ms. Palladaro? Any comments from the board or were questions? That was easy. Then we'll wait and see what we can, if we can hear. And we still don't have any audio. I guess we just have a thumbs up from Mr. Kaufman.
Going with a thumbs up.
Okay, so.
So then I need a motion to adjourn this public meeting, public hearing to January 20th, 21st, or January 20th, 2021?
I'll make that motion, Chris Oliver.
Thank you.
Second, Stephanie. Second, Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
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 Days or abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you, Lou and George. Sorry, we didn't get to hear from you tonight.
Good to see you, though.
Good to see you, and keep a surprise of anything that comes in just by email. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Dutchess County Bosie's Lot Consolidation. This application was reviewed at the last meeting. Essentially, they're taking four lots and turning them into one. Mr. Wells is here tonight. We had a bit of discussion on this about possibly receiving plans with limited revisions. Those include adding a zoning table, zoning bulk table, I should say, adding final plat to the title as required by our code, showing an easement and labeling it that's held by Verizon across the new lot, adding planning board signature blocks, netting a block for permission to file with the Health Department. These are all required by code, but they're just housekeeping. Unfortunately, Mr. Wells, they wouldn't have it ready tonight, which means we'll have to adjourn so we can still receive this as new information beforehand. Make it a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion. And Dexter?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second of the motion, Brett Pickett.
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Days or abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Wells, let me turn it over to you for a moment. Anything you'd like to add?
Good evening, all. No, I think you summarized where we are. We're gonna make some final, you know, revisions to the plat as the board requested, and our survey, I wasn't able to turn it around for this meeting, so we'll shoot for next week to get it to you for your consideration at the next meeting.
Comments from the consultants, Ms. Axelson or Ms. Palladaro?
No comments.
No, I didn't, I didn't think so. Any questions or comments from our board members, colleagues?
Nope.
Yeah, this is pretty simple. Councilman Krupnick, is there anyone from the public waiting to speak about this application in the waiting room?
There's nobody in the waiting room.
Thank you. Then, there being no comment, make it a motion to adjourn this to August 19th, 2020.
I make the motion. Brett Pickett?
Second. And Dexter?
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Wells, we keep dragging you in here for not much to do, but thank you, it's nice to see you.
All righty, see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Later, Fred.
Bye.
The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for the enclave at Hyde Park. As a reminder, we had opened this a while back, and we had to wait to conclude it until they received a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals, our sister board here in the town. That was received, so make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved. And Dexter? Second in, Diane DiNapoli.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I can see since I'm on grid. First, would there be anybody in the waiting room, Councilman Krupnick, to speak about this application?
I do not see anybody.
Thank you. There being none, let me just summarize by saying that there was some back and forth today and the last few days about the, about a building permit being expired. Tad, do you want to add into anything to that?
I believe through the last email that I sent, I spoke with Mr. Westmeyer, who has been in contact with the property owner, Mr. Mermelstein, and Mr. Mermelstein is moving ahead. He is renewing the permit, and they are discussing when the timing is appropriate for building permits for both the water and sewer plant. So I believe that issue is being resolved, and the Planning Board is welcome to move forward.
We were alerted by the Building Secretary that the permit had expired. Apparently, the, the issue was that because the water and sewer treatment plants had not been constructed, but the model home has, there were some questions as to whether or not it was going to go forward. In that, in the interim, I believe it was Ms. Board Member DiNapoli who sent me some notices about how the property, the site's being marketed right now, and apparently there are already people who've signed up to purchase. So I'm pretty sure this is going forward. Also a note that when we worked this out, our agreement was, is that they could, or rather, this was codified in our resolutions, they could move forward with the model home, but there would be no building permit for any of the other homes pulled or issued until the water and sewer plants were up. And so the model home is being shown without functioning water, obviously. But it's exciting to know that there's interest in people coming here to join our community, not just from the city, I think, but maybe just from other places, because it, we saw, I believe it was our secretary, initiative assistant, Ms. Whitman, who also sent out a picture of what the current sales model looks like, and it looked really nice, except for a weird pipe sticking up. So that noted. If there's no one to speak, and we have no, any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board, then make it a motion to close the public hearing with the proviso that we will allow 10 days to receive further written comment.
Michael, hold on one second. There's somebody, somebody in the waiting room with the name Steve Matthews, would he be with this project?
Not with this application, no. He's with Verizon.
Verizon.
Do you know what application that person is with?
Verizon, the, what they call Gretna Road Verizon, or cell phone tower.
Gotcha. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Was the motion made, I'm sorry, forgetting already, to close the public hearing?
So moved, Diane DiNapoli.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Weiser.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, I think. Ann, did you raise your hand and say aye? Yes, okay, great. The next item on the agenda is Verizon Cell Tower. This is a 175-foot or 179-foot lightning antenna, a cell phone tower proposed at basically 113 South Quaker Lane, more technically on Melanie Way, which is a private road. We had some, Mr. Olson and Mr. Matthews should both be here tonight, I believe. So we had a revised visual assessment submitted, as well as responses to some of Ms. Axelson's comments for CPL. She also had asked for the full NEPA report to look to read about for impacts potentially to endangered, threatened, and rare species. So first, let me turn it over to Mr. Olson and Mr., there you are.
Hi, good evening.
Thank you. Let me turn it over to you guys to summarize or to add further summary.
Sure. Um, let's see, here we go. So we received Liz Axelson's comments from last Friday. We know there's still some outstanding items to be addressed, but we feel that most of the items have been addressed now, and the one item I wanted to raise, it is in Liz's memo, it's item number two. Your RF consultant, Bill Johnson, suggested that we build and design this facility to accommodate a taller tower, one that would go up to 195 feet. That's to protect the town. We're happy to do that, we have no problem. But I believe that Ms. Axelson was suggesting that we have to, we should do some additional photo simulations of what that 195-foot tower would look like. I guess I, I don't see the need for that, because in our view, that's not part of the application, and if, in the future, that tower needs to be extended by another, you know, carrier, they're gonna have to make application to your board, and at that time, they should be the ones to do that, we feel.
For seeker purposes, to avoid segmentation, I think we want to see at least just one elevation showing it at its maximum potential height. And honestly, it might not make any visible difference, but we want one in the record.
It's probably not. I don't think seeker requires that, but I guess I would throw back to Steve. You know, Steve, can you do something like that without going back in the field? I mean, if we have to go back out in the field, we're talking about spending $5,000. And, and my client would probably just say, you know, I don't know.
We're asking you to do that.
Well, I have to ask Steve, you want to chime in?
Yeah, we can, we can do that with the current photographs we have, that's not a problem.
Okay. I still note my objection, I don't think it's required, but if Steve can do it, I guess we'll do it.
It's just two views, too. It's the, it's the two most visible ones.
Yeah, you have them listed, that's fine. I didn't know if Steve can do it based on what he had done.
Actually, we assumed that Mr. Matthews could do this because he also showed in the change, he actually showed what the antenna would look like, the wider antenna, without having to go back into the field, and it has been noted by all of us that we really couldn't tell, even with the wider antenna, at the visible spots, it's so far away, you can't really see what it looks like. There's no visual impact, I guess is what I should say.
Right.
So we are also, this is just an, out of an abundance of caution, as you would state it, Mr. Olson, as well as Ms. Palladaro, to make sure that we're doing seeker correctly here, so that if and when there is a need to do this, rather than segment it and say, oh, no, it can't go up that high, that we've already taken a look at it, that's all.
Yeah.
And Mr. Matthews can, can just give us the two spots, and that, that would seem to conclude that issue.
If Steve can do that, that's fine. I mean, we'll submit it, but we're just gonna qualify it that, obviously, that's not part of our application. Because what happens is, and as sure as I'm sitting here now, we'll have the public hearing, people will show up and see that, and they might flip out. I don't think it's gonna make a big deal, but then there's a lot of confusion created, so that's why I always try to just limit it to what we're doing. But I heard your concerns, and Steve can do it, so that's fine.
So Scott, can you confirm that what you've proposed to the board right now is strong enough to support the extension in the future without being completely rebuilt?
No, because nothing's been designed yet. So we don't, we're not gonna do the, I apologize. Go ahead, Chairman.
No, I said, there's a note on the map that actually says this. It's already put down on a note, because it hasn't been designed, that's why the note is there, I assume.
Right.
Correct. So I, so in other words, I can't tell you that what is proposed would do that, because there's no design yet. We don't, in order to design a tower, we have to buy the tower. In order to buy the tower, we have to pay money for that. We don't do that until we get the approval, because we don't want to waste the money. That's why I think there are some other comments about, well, what's the tower model and, and the specifications? And I'm gonna say, I don't know, right? And I can, we'll get that to you, but we don't know until we order the tower.
Just, just to clarify for the public, I just wanted you to explain that it would be, it would be built in a manner that would support an extension, but that the extension would come sometime in the future.
Yes to the first, second, I have, I have no idea. I don't know if an extension is coming in the future. It's not coming for us.
Just to chime in, the comment right after the request about the simulations asks for a minor amendment to the note to make it clear that a site plan amendment would be required for extension of the tower height. So I think the bases are covered?
Yeah, absolutely. We just, I'm trying, I try, I'm trying to tell you that, yeah, you, no one can go up there and extend that tower if we get this one approved and build it without coming back to the town and your board. So you'll, you'll be protected.
Let me go right over to Ms. Axelson, comments, Liz?
Sure. My name's Liz Axelson. I'm a planner with CPL, the Planning Board's Planning Consultant. And I think we've already touched on a couple of my July 31, 2020 memorandum comments. Part of the commentary is to reiterate some of the visual observations. That's really just for the board's, you know, ease of record for when we get to the point of considering any seeker action on this application. And of course, the board will have to come to its own conclusions. A lot of the comments that are remaining are technical issues. Some notation was requested, we asked for that wording to be changed. I'm gonna skip over those things. The reclamation plan was addressed very nicely, some minor revisions there. And then, you know, there are some technical comments about reclamation and annual reports and that sort of thing. But I guess I feel at this point, the board may be in a position to circulate for lead agency. I do have some seeker-related plan comments, and they really have to do with, Scott was good enough to provide the full National Environmental Policy Act, Environmental Report, or NEPA ER, which had the appendices that provided whatever we needed to know, whether any protective notes were needed on the plans. So I have requested in my comments some protective notation regarding the Indiana bat and northern long-eared bat that has to do with tree removal between November 1 and March 31. And then I've also requested some protective notation and also a plan sheet or part thereof that would provide information for people doing construction in the event a turtle is encountered on the site, so that it can be verified that it's not a Blandings turtle. We've had a lot of projects that have done a full sheet related to the Blandings turtle, even though it hasn't been determined to be present on the site, but it's just a protective measure in the event something is encountered. And we do have a, a couple of plan sheets that could be provided as samples in the event there's some question about how to present that material. So those, those are the major comments. The rest of them are fairly technical, and given the progress on the plans and reports so far, I expect these details will come together.
As the board knows, we have a resolution prepared tonight to classify the action and start the circulation process for seeker. We feel we're ready for that. And it's also, I believe, time for us to consider setting a public hearing, so we'll be trying to get to both of those, depending on the discussion tonight. Ms. Palladaro, any comments?
Not at this time.
Let me start, as I like to say, from my virtual left. Ms. Weiser, comments?
I think Liz and Victoria have everything covered.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett?
No comment.
Ms. Wasser?
No comments, no.
Wow. Vice Chair Dexter?
Nothing additional.
Oliver?
No additional comments.
Uh-oh, we're already to you, Diane, sorry. That was fast.
You almost forgot me.
No, I wasn't gonna forget you, it's just, we landed very quickly to you.
My only comment is, as, as usual, I am duly impressed with the details that Liz and Victoria bring to the table. They should be commended for all their hard work.
Agreed.
Thank you. Then, before we get to the resolution and motion to set the public hearing, let me play the heavy on this one first. Mr. Matthews, your comment about the, I believe it was a chain-linked fence not needing to be black-coded, because it would be obscured by vegetation. Our code actually in 108-4.5D M E 1, chain-linked fencing may be used where necessary for security purposes, but shall be provided with interwoven or applied material which obscures vision and shall be finished in earth tone or black color. That's why Liz had that as a comment. You can ask for a waiver of that, but you would have to ask for a waiver from it. And just so you know, in discussing this with Mr. Sotero, our consultants and staff continue to believe that there may be grading necessary for the, for the access road. I know that this has been maintained that there won't be, but I'm just gonna entertain the notion that at some point, if this continues to be at an impasse, where it's he said, she says, et cetera, we may need to have a monitor there to make sure that there's not gonna be grading, so I'm gonna introduce that now. Otherwise, I think that we're moving in good shape, and I'm looking forward to the public hearing to see what the public has to say about this. If anything, we are in a strange time, and let's face it. Ms. Axelson, comments?
I neglected to mention that I did speak with Pete about the end of Melanie Way, and he's gonna go take a look when he has a moment, he's just been away, so.
I'll also add that I appreciated you providing the links for the NEPA report as well. I went through as much of it as I could, it was super long. I will note that there, it looked as though there's no impact to primary habitat for Blandings turtles, but it's within the, the distance where they can rove. Blandings turtles, but it's within the, the distance where they can rove up to, which I think is why that Liz was bringing up the issue, because we're one of the few sites in all of the state that has a Blandings turtle population. So first, may I get a motion to set the public hearing for September 2?
You're on mute, Stephanie. Yeah, sorry. So moved. Sorry, Stephanie Wasser.
Second, Chris Oliver.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? They're being noted past unanimously. I believe Ms. Dexter, Vice Chair Dexter, is going to introduce the resolution.
That's correct. Resolution classifying action under seeker and referring application to County Department of Planning and Development for the Verizon Cell Tower at 113 South Quaker Lane, Gretna Lane, August 5, 2020, resolution number 202003. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as an unlisted action under seeker; two, declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the project and directs its secretary to send notice of its intent to all involved and interested agencies; three, directs its secretary to refer the site plan set to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section 239M of the General Municipal Law. Do I have a second?
Seconded, Brett Pickett.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll just enter into the record that the involved interested agencies include the Town of Hyde Park Town Board, Town of Hyde Park Conservation Advisory Council, the Town of Pleasant Valley Town Board, Duchess County Department of Public Works, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and Roosevelt Fire District. We are not technically required to send this to Pleasant Valley Town Board, but because we saw that it would be visible from Gretna Road, and it's just maybe 200 yards away from where we would, it's just a courtesy, they're interested only. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 Carries unanimously. Anything else you want to add, Mr. Olson or Mr. Matthews?
No, thank you. Have a good night.
Great. We'll see you on the second.
I just wanted to ask the applicant to put together those circulation materials in envelopes, addressed and stamped, so that the secretary can easily put in one sheet of paper and mail them out without having to touch all, everything.
You got it. Will do.
Mr. Olson, before we go, could you give us an update quickly about the other cell phone tower you represented on the Anderson Center site?
Yes. So there were a couple of conditions. I had to draft some documents. I drafted them a little while ago. I sent them to.
Your plans.
I sent it to my client. My client signed off on them, but we also sent them to the, to the Anderson School, because at least one or two of the documents involve them. So we were waiting for sign off on, from their part. I'll follow up tomorrow, though.
It's okay. I just, I realized today I hadn't signed them, and when I spoke to Cynthia, she said we haven't, don't have anything submitted yet. And I looked at the resolution, the conditions, and thought, oh, there's some things you had to do, so it's back and forth thing.
Yeah, and I know that the school was looking for something involving their porch or something, so, you know, we made sure that it's in their, it's in their hands, so hopefully they know. I'll follow up tomorrow.
It's a, it's a roof over the pool, not a porch, but.
I'm sorry.
No, close enough. And at this point, it's been so blamed hot that if their students are in the pool, they probably don't care about the sun or not, just want to be in the water, so.
Well.
Anyway, thank you for doing that, and have a nice evening, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you. You, too. Good night.
Can I mention one thing first, please?
Steve's got a comment.
Item about the fence, Liz and Tad did a sidewalk in June, and the memo that was issued from that sidewalk says in writing, given the location of the tower and compound, black coating on the chain fence is not necessary.
That's all true.
You just need to make a request to waive, for us to waive it, that's all.
We'll make that request, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to consider a request for an extension of time in which to meet conditions for Dollar General located at 1 East Dorsey. The request was dated July 10. And I believe Mr. Sharing is representing, and Mr. Fioretti are here representing the applicant. Mr. Fioretti has got a virtual background or is someplace sunny and exotic. Mr. Sharing and Mr. Fioretti, do you have anything to add? I just simply said you're, you've requested it, and we've also, in our resolution, we've given you what we call tolling, so we've given you extra days based on the governor's extension of time that we've had throughout this process of the COVID-19.
Good evening, and I'm sorry, I came in during that, when you were just making that announcement, so I don't believe I caught it all. But I appreciate you, you, you hearing us this evening. We were looking for an extension on, on this project. I believe Ken is on the line, Mr. Fioretti.
That's correct.
See? Come on, I don't see you on my screen, but I trust you're there.
Yes, and golly, just, his, his, his background already changed. That was quick. But yes, we have a resolution prepared to make the extension. Does any, are there any comments from our consultants or any comments from my colleagues on the board? Now, this is pretty simple, and we do these things, and we're also looking forward to this application starting, because it's a beautiful building. Believe me, we know. So I believe, if there being no other comments, I believe that this resolution will be introduced by Ms. Denapoli.
Resolution, tolling period and first 90-day extension to time to satisfy conditions of approval for the Dollar General at 1 East Dorsey Lane, August 5, 2020, resolution number 2019-04D. There are 11 wheres. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby applies the tolling period to the project and grants the applicant the time, the first 90-day extension of the time to satisfy the conditions of site plan and special use permit approval to and including January 15, 2021.
Second, Chris Oliver.
Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously again. There were no nays or abstentions, because I could see everybody raising their hand. Thank you. Mr. Fioretti, it's good to see you again. Mr. Sharing, nice to meet you.
As well.
And good luck. Do you have any other questions?
No, that's all. Thank you very much. Good to see you, too.
Same here. Take care.
You, too. Thank you.
And the last item on the agenda is Hyde Park Town Center North. This is the site where we have a new Dunk, new Domino's Pizza. We have a new, we locate the barber shop, et cetera. One building has not been reconstructed yet. That's the building that holds Feeds Plus. So they've asked for an extension of site plan deadlines to complete construction. Ms. Leibolt is here. Welcome back, Kelly. You're going to need to unmute.
Okay. Sorry.
Is there, is there anything you'd like to add, Kelly?
No, I was unaware that I had to apply for an extension, so thank you to Cynthia for reminding us that we had to submit this. We are working with a tenant to try to hopefully bring something before you soon for that, you know, those last two buildings, and that's about all I can offer at the moment.
It's good to hear that you're working with a tenant. Thank you. That's exciting to hear. Anytime that we have new businesses coming into town, you know how this board likes to welcome them.
Yes.
So thank you. And all we're doing tonight is setting the public hearing, and this is fairly straightforward. Mr. Krepnik, Councilman Krepnik, did you want to show a, do you have a picture to show of the building? So this is where Feeds Plus is currently located for people who are longtime Hyde Parkers. This would be just to the left of the former Grand Union, et cetera. And again, the applicant worked, and their architect worked with the board to come up with a design that we all liked that's cohesive within the site. So I believe, may I get a motion to set the public hearing for August 19?
So moved. And Wiser?
Second. And Dexter?
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Leibolt. We'll see you in a couple of weeks. Have a nice night. Stay safe, and sane, and healthy.
Thank you, you, too. Take care, everyone. Bye-bye.
Bye, Kelly.
And there being no other business, make it a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Chris Oliver?
Seconded, Brett Pickett.
By the way, I signed those two guys, because I know how you guys both like to get out of these meetings quickly, along with the rest of us. So all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good to have you back, Diane.
Thank you, everyone. Diane, your hair looks great. And Councilman Krepnik, thank you, and Supervisor Rory, as always, for providing the resources so we can conduct these meetings for the business of the town. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Neil.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.